Do we have the right?
Of course you do.
In the contract stating now to renegotiate the price once it's automatically renewed because according to what?
But you don't let it automatically renew if you don't like the price.
Okay, but we're having a problem now with the one that we have now.
Because your previous managers didn't watch to see when those contracts were supposed to renew.
Okay, well, let's try and.
I've been down this road with bigger companies than this, and if you don't watch what's going on with the contracts, then you get stuck.
That's why we're trying to watch this one.
Okay. I understand that.
Yeah, so first we have to deal with the situation about the current contractor claiming that we can't cancel.
Yeah.
So.
My interpretation of this is that it says that you have to give at least ninety days before the end of the initial three year period. And then the same thing before every renew. Well, we're giving in six months, so that's more than at least ninety days.
They're in the edowise all day.
They're here all the time, and it's ridiculous.
Dan, so I have a question.
Yeah.
So what's gonna happen, for instance, like the problem in the edowise building, it has to be resolved. Like who's gonna resolve that problem, the next two? I can hear you. Like what's gonna happen as far as like resolving that? Because I understand that people on the third floor, they're not able to use the elevator.
Well, we're, right now, we're still dealing with Oracle and trying to get them to fix the problem. If we go to another company, they're gonna, I'm gonna have them address the biggest problems being edowise and interlocking, which is constantly being broken down. But they're going to go through the entire property and make sure every one of these elevators is working properly. My biggest bone of contention with Oracle is I've got a stack this thick on my desk of what, how many times they've been here just this year, and the elevators still don't work.
We've got problems not even.
That's a failure to perform, and that would be a breach.
See, my question is more like, if, if they have, if they know that our intentions are to get rid of them, what's gonna happen as far as resolving the problem quickly?
Well, if they, if they don't do it, then I'll bring somebody else in.
That's not gonna be solved.
Because we, we have to, we have to resolve it quickly. I just wanna kind of like go on the table.
Okay, so.
I mean, that, that would be a way to show that they're, that they're breaching the contract because they can't resolve a problem, and we have to bring in another company to get it fixed.
Yeah, and you can, you can get damages for that if they're in breach contract. They, they need people who do this.
Exactly. The attorney fees will be involved.
Attorneys, when you get the attorneys involved, you end up paying twice what you're trying to save.
It's not, it's not the association clause, it's Oracle's.
Right. But unless we actually take them to court, we will never recover those attorney fees, ever. That's the problem. And taking them to court is a big lengthy process. It's much better always to try to resolve something amicably possible. What I would suggest, Dan, if you think this is advisable, is send another letter, right? Because they, what they do, they, they didn't accept the first one.
They called and said that they, that it wasn't timely. They want to meet with me. I still haven't gotten a written response to the termination letter that I sent. I got an email today from one of their representatives saying that their response letter would be coming shortly. We're, we're almost through the month, and they got their termination letter the beginning of the month.
Okay, but, but why don't you resend, send another one? Send another one, but, but please, in the letter, it needs to state why. Because I don't know if we did that in the first letter, as far as the non-performance with the edowise. Okay, so make sure it's very carefully written that it triggers the language in the contract that says non-performance, because I don't know if that was done in the first letter. So please, put, put the letter, put it in writing, send it to me, or send it to the board for approval via email, whatever. Because we wanna make sure that the language, you know, we're crossing every T and dotting every I. So rewrite the letter. We have still thirty days before the date that you gave them.
I gave them to them in January.
Okay, so please, please write that letter tomorrow with the thirty day, okay? With the thirty day to the twenty seventh, which is a little more than thirty days, reiterating and saying the reason is because of non-performance. So we already, we already basically moved that at the last meeting, so we don't have to make that motion again. What's pending now is the replacement contract. So, and it would have to be a contingent, you know, based on if they accept, if they accept that they're canceled. At that point, we would, we would sign the contract. But since we have a little bit of time, and we'll have one more meeting before the cancellation time, I'd like to see if we could ask motion to match the cancellation terms of, of express, which is for ninety days, in addition to the non-performance clause here. And that if they were willing to do that, we would like to approve their contract at the January meeting. Can you do that?
This is for motion?
Uh, okay, so.
You want motion?
Basically, we need a motion to, yeah, no, we need a motion to accept provisionally the motion elevator contract if they agree to add a ninety day cancellation. No, you know, no reasons needed.
Right.
To their contract at the price that they quote here. And also contingent upon the, what's the other company called, Ace?
Oracle?
Oracle.
Contingent also upon Oracle accepting the cancellation letter. So basically, we need a motion to that effect. Would someone like to make that motion? Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Uh, Mar, we meet you two first, so, Crystal, would you like to second the motion instead? Okay. So again, the motion was to accept the motion elevator bid contingent upon them adding the ninety day cancellation clause and also contingent upon Oracle accepting the cancellation letter as of June, sorry, January twenty seventh. Okay? Any, any more discussion on this item on the board? Questions from the membership? Any objection? Hearing on this approved? Okay, next item is Wi-Fi.
Okay, as I stated in the manager's report, I have three companies that claim that they can take care of our problem with Wi-Fi. It's Evan Tech, it's the gentleman who came out and straightened out the office. He's given us a proposal for, to do the work at ninety-five dollars an hour. I looked online because there are not a lot of companies out there that do commercial Wi-Fi. I found a company that was called Hello Tech. And they gave me a price of eighty-nine dollars an hour with a minimum to start of two hours. They don't actually do the work. They appear to be more of a referral company, and the actual work would be done through Pro Support. Then our electric company contacted us and said that they know how to do this work.
Electric company?
Yes, it's an electric company. It's Watts New Electric.
Oh, it's not, it's not FPL?
No, 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 no.
Okay, you don't mean.
When I say our electric company, I mean we do.
You mean the electric?
In-house electricity.
Yeah, okay.
They gave us a price of thirty-seven hundred dollars for material and then, and did not say how, what it would cost per hour for their labor. The thirty-seven hundred dollars is per building.
How much again?
Thirty-seven hundred. Times, it would be times eleven. To set up the Wi-Fi in all buildings.
Can we just fix what's there now? Why, why can't we just fix what we have there now?
I, I don't know that we can't because we haven't had anybody actually come out and look at this. This gentleman from the electrician company is just, hasn't been, as far as I know, on the property, and he's just, far as I can tell, kind of spitballing what he thinks it's gonna take. The other, the other two companies said that they will come out, they will look at what's going on here, and then they will fix it. Well, my opinion is that Carlos was the person that set this up in the first place. My understanding is even when he was doing your IT work here, that he was constantly going around and resetting the Wi-Fi. So a little bit that these, that the one gentleman that was here already doing the office and just kind of looked at it a little bit, his opinion was this, this was set up as a residential situation instead of commercial because of the number of units you have here. It should have been treated as a commercial operation and not just going into somebody's house.
Okay, but.
So what does he say? That means bringing a conduit and running hard everything.
He, he needs to come, he needs to come out, take a look at it, and then give us an actual estimate.
We went around this block, having, having cut the commercial code, and we were taking advantage of something that Comcast had done, and the building was gonna tap into it, and.
As I said, he hasn't given me a breakdown of what he, he feels needs to be done.
And why we felt obligated to provide free Wi-Fi is still a mystery. But at thirty-seven hundred dollars a building, we're never, it's just being nice, you know? Get some votes, I don't know.
The issue we have to do is eliminate it. The association should be responsible for people's Wi-Fi.
I don't.
I pay my own Wi-Fi.
Do, uh, I, I don't recall what the explanation of the reason was given back. When Wi-Fi was instituted, because that was back, I believe, in twenty-eleven?
It was the.
Twenty-eleven, around there, or twenty-twelve?
Of the big, of the big.
Say it again?
So when we're getting free Wi-Fi, because everyone was complaining about an assessment, so it was kind of cushioned, you said, oh, we'll get free Wi-Fi.
So it was twenty-twelve, correct? All right.
And, and that's not reason enough for us to go head over heels and that.
Mm-hmm, no, I agree. Whatever the, whatever the assessment paid for, we got that. No, that was a free. Okay, but the question I have is, like, it wasn't this bad before. I guess maybe Carlos was wanting to be setting more often or whatever than we are now. I don't know why.
It took away one of our free movie channels.
I can't speak something?
Hold on, Marcia, George is gonna say something, but.
You have to, you have to, excuse me, please. You have to be, be real view around what happened with the Wi-Fi. I'm gonna tell you what happened. I'm dealing with this every day. I hear anything when I walk in a room, everybody has complaints. I have my employee's name, Roberto is, is coming, trying fixing anything we have here. Everything we have in the, in the Wi-Fi in this company, it was a trust. I want to explain what's the problem is. The guy who did the Wi-Fi, I don't have any problems with, with Carlos, because he went trying doing the best he can, but the problem is he, he did a wrong. He put in units, and it's like you put in ten valves in, twenty valves in one line, like a water. That's the way you're gonna understand. Okay, see, one, one valve is broken, you know, can't have water in the end. What they have to do, the other guys, they have to fix in this valve for supply the water in the end of the line. That's what happened with this Wi-Fi. The units they put in, I can tell you right now, in one build, in one floor, they have six, seven, eight units. No commercial, residential, okay? That's the problem.
And, and.
Now, my, my, that solution now, the manager knows, everybody knows, this thing we have now, we have to take it out. We have to put some equipment better with more power that we have, we have a Wi-Fi in good condition. And also, we have to spend money, it's not just little money.
And, and.
Dude, when I, when I, it was okay, just your email, but everybody's got.
Could you go back for a second? Just a second. Marcia, go ahead, Marcia.
My question is, how many unit owners actually have their own Wi-Fi and do not use the crowded bandwidth association Wi-Fi?
You, you won't be able to find that unless you go by door.
Everybody else is on the Wi-Fi.
Tony, you have Wi-Fi? You have a Wi-Fi?
Fifty thousand dollars, I'd rather have that.
We don't have all.
It says the majority, looks like it's majority uses our Wi-Fi. Anyway.
My question. How much does it cost us monthly to provide the Wi-Fi?
Nothing.
I, nothing except whatever staff time, you know, is spent, you know, readjusting or resetting, I guess, the routers. I don't think this has anything to do with Comcast, or does it, Dan? Does it have any, does it have anything to do with Comcast?
No, we bought the routers.
We bought the routers.
The routers are not the routers we need. He installed the wrong router, all the routers.
The routers are in the hallway.
Okay. I, um, maybe we're bugging into Wi, I mean, to the Comcast or what?
I think it's Comcast, but, you know, I, I think the best thing to do, I think the best thing to do is invest a few hundred dollars, pick one of these two companies, and let them come in and see what the story is exactly here.
Okay, but this is, I think we need to give them very, very clear guidance on what we want. We don't want some fifty thousand dollar proposal.
And it's gonna cost a lot of money.
He's doing, he's doing now.
To make him happy, so.
Okay, um, yeah, this is the thing, like, I don't wanna see another proposal for fifty thousand or thirty-seven thousand dollars.
No, I, I think what, what we should do is at least let them do the analysis. Maybe, yeah, at, at least to take a look and say, okay, this is what your problem is. Give us an estimate on what it would cost, and if it's completely out of whack, then. That's another decision, but if it's, it may be, it may not be, you know, such terrible catastrophe if he can use some.
But, but, we need to limit it. Like ninety-five dollars an hour, it can't be open, I think. We have to say that, to a maximum of however many hours.
Oh, exactly, yeah. I would, I would say maybe no more than five hours.
All right, so, okay, um, somebody wanna make that, for which, which company? Which one of these here? There's two, there's the Evan. And there's, uh, let's see, Hello Tech.
Yeah, I, I don't know much about this Hello Tech. As I said, Evan wasn't in here.
What's his company, Evan's company, what's the name of it?
It's called Evan Tech.
Okay.
I just had him take a look at one building and see, and see what he, what the problem is. And, you know, I'll tell him that it, it can't go over a certain number of hours, you know, whatever the board wants to invest, and I'll make sure that it doesn't go beyond that. And then give me, give me an idea from, you know, tell him, give me an idea of what we're looking at here. What do you, what does he think it's going to take? And then I'll bring it back to the board and let the board decide whether they think it's viable to go forward with it.
Um, the Wi-Fi does seem to work better in this building, correct? It seems like it's.
Right now, it's not working at all again.
It's not?
No.
Anyway, um, maybe that's an alternative. I don't know if we could get the, you know, just reliable in this one building? In the clubhouse? But, but, okay, so we need a motion, and you're recommending Evan Tech?
Yes.
A motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion, uh, according to what passed, just for the record, I'd like to make a motion to get the Wi-Fi only in the clubhouse and cancel the Wi-Fi in all the buildings.
That's not fair. No, you don't even live here, right? Yeah, you don't even come to the meetings.
Okay, is, is there a second? I, I wouldn't second that, but is there a sec? Is there a second to that? I, I don't hear a second, so the motion dies. Okay. Okay, so Carl, you were gonna say something? Carl? Carl, were you gonna say something? Um, all right, so, uh, the motion that's being recommended is that we, uh, that we engage Evan Tech at ninety-five dollars an hour up to a maximum of five hours to analyze the situation and give us a proposal to fix this situation with the Wi-Fi. They're all the same, so it wouldn't really matter, right?
That's the one we're, we're talking about now.
Yeah, but fifteen hundred is too much. I mean, five, five hours. If, if he tells you that he can't analyze the situation and prepare a report in five hours, then, you know, no, then just.
I understand.
Right, so. Mm-hmm, right. So basically, the motion again is to engage Evan Tech at ninety-five dollars an hour up to a maximum of five hours to analyze the Wi-Fi situation and provide a report, the recommended solution, a reason, at a reasonable price to address this situation, okay? So that's, that's the motion we need. Anybody wanna make that motion? Mar makes the motion for Evan Tech, and Carl seconds. Okay. Uh, any discussion on the board? Any additional discussion on the board? Any other questions from the, yes, Jerry?
I'm trying to understand why we are now adding an amenity, an amenity to the owners, eight hundred and thirty-two owners in the association that was not ever promised, you know? It didn't exist when the place began. It's bad enough that we're paying over three hundred and some thousand dollars for our, our television, okay? And, and, and half of the people aren't here, or maybe more than half the people aren't here for a good part of the year. To me, if we wanted to save hundreds of thousands of dollars, as far as maintenance is concerned, because that comes out of each of our pockets, maintenance, everybody pays maintenance, so it's not that you're stiffing somebody. If we didn't have Comcast, and it was only, like, I have Comcast in Philadelphia, I have Comcast here. I turn off my Comcast in Philadelphia when I'm here. Same thing when I move back there. So if I needed it, I can have it. But I don't know why we're spending hundreds of thousands. I, I agree with Marcio. But the thing that we can do to make sure that people who can't afford it have it, if we have a strong system in the clubhouse, you know, people who are now not having their Wi-Fi in their building, they come to the clubhouse so that they can take their laptop and they could be online, or they can use the computers that we put into the library, okay? But now, to give all, to give all, excuse, excuse me, Marcio, excuse me, okay? The, to give everybody, Marcio. You're not even here, Marcio, I'm talking. Would you shut up? Okay, would you shut up? Man alive. Unbelievable. I don't think we should allow telephoning in, frankly, because we're ta, being taken advantage. That's another subject. I understand.
That's true.
Okay, but that really sucks, all righty? I like to see the whites of somebody's eyes when they're saying something. Yeah, I know it's off topic, but I, 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 I think, I agree with Marcio. We should have a strong signal here in the, in the clubhouse, and I, I buy my own Wi-Fi. I'm not bothered by, by the Wi-Fi in the building. That would save a lot of money.
Thank you, Jerry. Actually, um, you know, Dan, on that point, could you make sure that you tell Evan Tech that as part of their report or analysis, to give us the analysis as an alternative of just providing reliable service right here in the clubhouse? But, but the, the report should give us both options, okay? Can you make sure that that's in there? Okay. Uh, so, okay, we have a motion.
On that note, you have to understand that there are people that can.
Saying, I, I'm agreeing with Jerry as well. International Village unfortunately is mostly occupied by tenants. Why we, the owners, are being and providing free Wi-Fi for tenants? They should get it all, and we should save that money, that ten fifteen thousand dollars we owe them every month.
Again, it's not really, uh, there's not a maintenance charge in there. Uh, anyway, we have one more person?
This gentleman here.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, yes, over there, right there. Oh, I'm sorry, I, I forgot.
That's okay. That, that point with the Wi-Fi here in the, in the, in the office is fine, but what about the people that cannot walk over here or can't get here to you?
We're getting both, we're getting both options in the report, okay? Miriam, and then I'll get back to you.
I can't come here every day and bring my laptop.
I understand, yeah.
But why don't we have to take the fault, because Carlos installed the wrong router?
Okay, because that was already done, and I guess that's what some of the special assessment funds that were designated to that purpose were, were used for. So anyway, uh, but, but we'll get two options, and then we'll, we'll discuss it again next month. Yes?
Do we know how much it costs now?
How much it costs?
It costs now for the eleven buildings to have the Wi-Fi?
No, 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 there, there's no cost for that right now, other than whatever staff time is, is spent maintaining it. I wouldn't say it's completely free because obviously there, there is some staff time that's spent on that, but you can't really, it's hard to break that down in terms of what staff time is spent.
I mean, we, we don't pay any allowance to Comcast or whatever to have the Wi-Fi.
No.
No, which means you're not gonna say money to take the Wi-Fi off.
The Wi-Fi, the, the Comcast contract was approved several years before, and it was a multi-year contract. It was approved several years before we had Wi-Fi. John?
We maybe make a deal with Comcast that we all get, like, at my private internet. But I would like to get it cheaper, so maybe we can make a deal with Comcast that people pay only ten dollars. They will make money with it. They gave us a bulk rate.
Okay, um, we, I don't know if we can, yeah. Okay. So we don't need that, that would, that would not be a bulk rate, that would be a regular.
Dan, we're checking out, Comcast only charges ten dollars for the Wi-Fi.
That's cheap.
Because I know somebody hooked it up, I mean, I have my own.
That's not bad at all, okay. Anyway, um, that's an option for any of you that have issues with the Wi-Fi, that's an option. But, uh, okay, Dan, could you, when you talk to Comcast, could you ask them, is there a bulk rate? That's another option. All right, so, um, we have a motion and a second on the table to engage Evan Tech. Is there any more, any more discussion on the board? Do we need a roll call on this? Okay, Carl, call the roll on, on the, on engaging Evan Tech to give us the analysis of to a maximum of five hours spent on, yeah, as a report.
Can, can Dan first call Comcast before having Evan come in here and find out how much it would cost to have, let's say, five hundred people living here to have the Wi-Fi putting, how much it would cost if there was a special thing that you did?
I, I can tell you one thing about Comcast. If they're gonna do it, they're gonna do it to the whole community. It's not gonna be, you want only for five hundred people or anything. They're gonna tell you, you're gonna have to have it for the whole community if you want a bulk rate.
But if a lot of us have it, I have my own.
They don't care.
Yeah, fifty dollars a month.
I, I will speak, I will speak to Comcast and see what can be done before I, let them do what they have to do. And I will speak to Comcast, and they can always rescind this motion at any time.
Okay, so.
Let's move forward.
We have a, we have a motion and a second on the table, but as Dan said, if, you know. Okay, so we have, we have a motion and a second on the table, but as Dan said, if, yeah.
My apartment, I think it's ten dollars, maybe fourteen dollars a month if you have your own router. Then it's that easy.
Right, I mean, it's not a huge savings. This is the free Wi-Fi we're discussing. It's two different issues, but we will address that too. All right, so there's a motion and a second on the table. Let's call the roll. Dan, I mean, sorry, Carl.